Welcome. This is the March 17th, 2025, meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, March 21st, 2025. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, March 21st, 2025, the date of certified copies recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, March 6th, 2025. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Voting tonight, Bob Gross, Tom Wolfher, Karen Raddatz, Ray Rice, and myself, Joe Russick. If anybody is here to see here 25-004, a variance request for four field drive, that's been continued to April. So our first request is for 25-005, a variance request from Molinari, 18 David Drive. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a staff comments that reads as follows.
Who's here for it? Okay, I'm sorry.
That reads as follows. Applicant seeks front yard variance of 36.2 feet where 40 feet is required and side yard at 5.5 feet where 10 feet is required to construct an eight-foot-by-nine-foot covered entry and to correct side yard setback from 10 feet to 5.5 feet from variance approval number 73-144 to construct an attached garage at 18 David Drive in an R-18 district. Property was granted variance approval in 1973 for the same attached garage. The garage was never constructed. Variances do not have expiration and property owner opted to erect the approved proposed garage in 2024-2025 with proper zoning approval and building permits. In 1973, surveys were not required to erect any additions or seek ZBA approval. Although not required, the side yard request is strictly to provide accurate distance from side boundary that resulted from obtaining an improvement location survey in January 2025 to construct the front covered landing. Property owner did not realize constructing a roof over the front landing was considered a building structure requiring compliance with setbacks and therefore commenced construction during the garage construction process. This front yard request is to request approval for a covered front landing in approaching required front yard by 3.8 feet at its minimum point along nine feet of dwelling entryway. That's it for the staff comments. Then, let's see, oh five. We also have an interdepartment review from the Health Department dated Friday, March 7th, 2025, and that's it.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Molinari, 18 David Drive.
Paul Ribeschi, 90 Culver Lane, North Haven, Connecticut.
Okay. Good. Give us your explanation. What do you got going on here?
Well, this is the house I grew up in, and in 1973, my parents did get the variance for a garage they wanted one. Never had the money to do it. I got divorced in 2018, and at the time that I was looking for a place to live, the tenants that my brother and I were renting to said they were leaving, so I moved in. And what I've been doing is kind of shepherding and being a steward of the land and kind of fulfilling a dream that my parents had. So that was the garage part, and then it was like, well, wouldn't it be nice to put a little roof over the porch? And that was the portico part.
So it's all built?
It's all built.
And including the cover over the...
Ready.
Okay. Let me just wait for Amy. She's...
For her, you're moving.
No problem.
So Amy, this, everything's okay? It's just the cover over the stairs that we're really talking about here?
Correct. During, you know, as most people don't realize, that a little bit of roof over a landing also requires compliance. So during the course of constructing the garage, which I've met with them many, many times, to make sure everything was right.
Yeah.
To construct the garage. And during the course of that, we went, oops, you've got to get the variance for the front yard for that, for that little piece. And in the meantime, back in the day, in 1973, we didn't need a survey. So the estimation of how far the garage would be off of the property line was significantly less in actuality. So they also have requested that just to package it up nicely. It's not required, but...
The property lines back then were defined by tree plantings.
Yeah.
When I had the survey done, I was like, whoa!
So, yeah, just to true that piece up at the same time. But it is only really for that front landing is what brings them to the best.
Okay. Does anybody got questions for the applicant?
So you're five and a half feet away from the side yard then? What it is, so that's why. When you went in to talk to Amy, did you start building the garage before you'd spoken to Amy?
Oh, no.
No, no, no. So, no, from saying that, did you mention to her that you were doing the portico or the top, the front steps? Show the plans?
Well, I think we had some plans, but I think that kind of got missed, and I was under the impression that, you know, it wasn't required because it was going on the front steps too, so... But I think we did, we did talk about the garage before we did any construction.
I mean, I just went by your house. It looked beautiful. It fits in with the neighborhood. I'm just for logistics and how the town does things.
Yeah.
Because this was a 50-year-old application that comes forward, and now it's built and it looks fine, and you're five and a half feet away. It's fine, but I just think the town needs to tone up some of their requirements, something that's 50 years old should really be rebooked after before they can build. And I'm glad you went to the town first.
Well, it does follow the...
Yeah, I understand.
...part of order. Their variance does follow the land, so... And I bet she was claiming it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, finally. Money trees sprouts.
But if rules had changed between then and then, then...
Well, they have not.
Yeah, but if they had, actually, they went ahead and built it, they went back and built the company old scenario. So that's the only thing. It's just to make sure that the rules are followed, because it could be, literally, they could have built it 100 years from now.
We said correct, and we sat at length, and again, it was a drawing one would make in 1973.
Uh, napkin.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty close.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we had extensive meetings, plan, pre-plan, before they built it.
It looks fine. I was just curious about the background of it. Anybody else? I guess I went up there and saw.
Anybody else got questions? No, I don't. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none, is anything further you'd like to add before I close the public hearing and we ask for discussion and possible action by the board?
No, I just may appreciate your time and consideration and hope you grant it because, you know, kind of is a dream fulfilled, so, you know, it's really an honor of my parents to do it all for us.
On a closed public hearing and open for discussion and possible action by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a variance request for front yard of 36.2 feet where 40 feet is required to cover front landing at 18 David Drive as shown on improvement location survey as built, prepared for Linda Molinari dated 1/30/25 and submitted plans received 2/10/25. So move.
Second.
Motion to approve, this is for the front yard. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Raddatz?
Yes to approve, and Chairman Russick?
Yes.
Also make a motion for variance request for side yard of 5.5 feet where 20 feet is required to construct attached garage and modify approved variance number 73-144 at 18 David Drive as shown on improvement location survey as built, prepared for Linda Molinari dated 1/30/25 and submitted plans received 2/10/25. So moved.
Second.
This is for the side yard, motion to approve. Mr. Gross?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Raddatz?
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick?
Yes to approve. Your variance requests have been... Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep, take care. Happy St. Patty's. No. So if anybody's here for 25-006 for 360 Woodhouse Avenue, that's going to be continued to April meeting. So next variance request is 25-007 for 44 South Turnpike Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant seeks parking variance for 46 spaces where 39 exist and 58 are required to change the use of 7,200 square feet of retail use to medical office use at 44 South Turnpike Road in a CB40 district. The property consists of 9,750 square feet of commercial space. 2,500 square feet of the building is a barber shop requiring one parking space per 250 square feet of area or 10 spaces. 7,250 square feet of the building area was formerly a retail business requiring one parking space per 250 square feet of area for 29 spaces. Existing parking on site provides for 39 spaces. Applicant proposes to change the use of 7,250 square feet from permitted use of retail to permitted use of medical office and the dental office. Medical office use requires a higher parking requirement of one space per 150 square feet of area for 48 spaces. Therefore, the site requires 58 spaces to adequately meet the onsite parking requirement for both uses of the building. Applicant has identified seven proposed additional parking spaces which would increase the existing total spaces onsite from 39 to 46. Applicant will need to follow any ZBA approval with change of use/site plan to Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the additional seven parking spaces. To consider, the parking requirement for medical office use per the Wallingford Zoning Regulations requires 33% more parking spaces than data available for necessary parking requirements for medical office use per the 2019's fifth edition ITE Parking Generation Also have, let's see, this is 07. Yep, that's it. That's it for this.
Thank you. Is anybody here for 44 South Turnpike? Is there anybody in the hallway?
I don't know.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
We thought we had another half hour to go.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Dante Buffy, 33 Silver Brook Lane, North Haven, Connecticut, 06060.
Please explain your application.
We're here for a, mainly a parking variance. The staff at the planning department had gone through with us and explained that the one was a supermarket on this piece of property. The parking regulations were different than now that we're changing it to a business use. And although the supermarket, you would think would be much more demanding for parking, the numbers didn't work that way. Changing it to a business use, dentist is what the tenant would be, would be more demanding for parking count. So what we did was took a look at the parking as it stood, looked to see how many spaces we could add to achieve, I believe, the number that the new parking count would be is 58, see how many parking spaces we could get. We were able to add six more to the count that we had, and they suggested that due to the situation, it's an existing building, sort of a unique situation, that going for a variance for the parking would be the smart thing to do for this project.
So is it six or seven spaces? Because on staff comments here, it's seven. You found an additional seven.
Oh, so we found an additional seven spaces. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, it's okay. Want to make sure that, yeah, that's presented correctly. So we're West Side Market, Rose, right? That's where this is?
Yes.
The dental office, they're going to need, how many spaces are you estimating for the dental office alone?
Well, it's less about what we're estimating and what the parking rigs are telling us.
Right. That's why I'm asking that question.
Yes. Let me pull it up right now. Again, sorry.
Oh, it's all right.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're able to achieve, 58 spaces for the entire property, the old supermarket and the barber shop that still exists, would need 58 for the entire property. We found an additional seven spaces to get it to 46 total. So that's, that's currently where we are.
So you have 46 spots right now on that piece of property?
Forty-six spots right now. One of the things that's changed to our benefit is it's no longer a supermarket, so the back of the building is where we found the six spots. We don't have the necessity for 18 wheelers and produce trucks and deliveries, so that's a great spot for employee parking. It already is completely, has a gravel surface, doesn't need to change. We were instructed that any parking spaces we found needed to not change the impervious surface. In other words, we couldn't, couldn't take grass area and make it into parking spaces. So those additional seven spaces in the back are on a gravelled area, like I said, perfect for employee parking, and the rest of the parking in that U formation would stay the same.
Okay. So in the dental, well, let me start. The barber shop, how many chairs does he have?
I honestly could not tell you how many chairs he has.
How many employees are there?
To my knowledge, there's typically one or two there all the time.
Right. And he, does he operate six days a week, five days a week?
I believe he's six days a week.
Okay. And the dental office, how many chairs are going to be in that?
The dental office will have 10 chairs, but the nature of the way that works is that it's not like one dentist per chair. It's, chairs are rarely filled all at the same time, but even if they are, there'll be two dentists, maybe three on staff, and they'll be popping from chair to chair. There's a lot of turnover.
But there's hygienists?
Correct.
And then there's the assistants?
Correct.
There's office staff?
Correct.
So do you have a number that you think are going to be used by employees?
Employees for the whole space?
Well, for the, for the dental office.
Yeah. And they, what they explained to us is at like a high time where there's a, you know, booked out for the afternoon, they could have seven employees on at one time in the, in the, in the rooms themselves, and then add two receptionists pretty much at all times.
Okay. Plus two receptionists, and then two dentists or three dentists? What are they talking about?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure.
There's two.
If they're taking more on?
Two dentists, okay.
There's two dentists.
Two dentists or the flat? Okay.
So, so there's approximately 11 employees then?
Think of it as a worst-case scenario. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't know exactly how many spots the barber uses?
I do not. Anything to add on the barber?
I think he has six chairs.
Do you want to have him come up and have a seat?
Sure.
Please? No, just give us your name and address.
Tom Seagull, 171 Robin Lane, Cheshire, Connecticut.
Okay.
I think he has six chairs, and he alternates, too. I don't think it's full every day, and he's closed Sundays and Mondays.
Okay.
And then the other thing, I guess that he was speaking with the dentist, and they have a couple of days where, so they work Mondays, he doesn't, and then I think they're not there Fridays, and he is. So there's, they have a little bit of, I think there's only one or two days where they overlap.
Okay.
Both there full, and then the dentist has one late night, the barber has one late night, and then the different nights, I think one's a Wednesday, one's a Thursday. So it seems to be working out, I think, except for one day where it's just a little bit heavy. That's it.
Okay. Amy? We're... I'm just trying to come up with, do they need, actually need 58 spaces?
That's the requirement.
Right.
And understand, as you've mentioned in comments, that they are asking for not what is existing, but for more spaces that'll have to be vetted through planning and zoning.
Right.
Should it not, those extra spaces?
Right. Planning and zoning has to approve those.
Then they'll have to come back and ask for the 39. So all we can say is the requirements that are in our regulations for the different uses require there to be 58 spaces. Whether or not they're necessary is what they're in front of you for. And there was, it was interesting, the town engineer provided the ITE Parking Generation Manual in, you know, bazillions of pages, and it, and it does have certainly medical use less than going to get you milk because you're spending some sort of duration. However, that's the regulations.
That's our regulations, right?
So that's, that's what they have to subscribe to, so...
150 versus 250. Correct. Accountable.
It was significantly less what they would, what they require, whether it came out to be that. It was, it was a different number, so, and the existing would suffice.
Okay.
But again, they didn't ask for existing, they asked for 46. That includes those new spaces, so should that not meet like plan review and requirements?
Then they're going to be back.
They have to come back and ask for the existing. Correct. I believe that if I understand correctly, the applicant was notified from the town plan as much, because you can't grant more than they're asking for.
Okay. Does anybody got questions? Go ahead, Bob.
So I agree that, I think there's six chairs there, and there's quite a few barbers there at a time. I go there.
Okay. Well, now we can get some information.
So when I've been there, there's usually four to five or more barbers there at a time, just for verification of that. Where's, where are you going to put the dumpster?
We haven't proposed changing the location in that top left corner of the parking area.
So I have pictures. That's what I'm going for here. So we're the one, there's one on the, so you're going to keep that one, but that eats parking spaces? That's the question.
We didn't count our parking spaces where the dumpster was.
I counted them. I, I counted those as parking spaces, and it doesn't come up to the 39, counting those spots, not counting behind the building, because I didn't know where you were going to put the parking, if you changed your mind. So I'm just saying that the dumpster there, because the dumpster on the right side also eats a parking space. In the park corner. Yeah. I think we're going to try to move it, because where it is, is a good parking. Yeah. And we also removed the cooler in the back, and that was taking up a good chunk of the back of the building, that had the cooler outside, and I believe the distance between the spots across behind it, there's enough room to put some parking in the back there, or we could put the dumpster there. So you're talking where the rear door, the loading door is? Yeah. That's where you're talking about? That was a big concrete pad there, so... Yeah, you could see that you got some work to do on the building there. Yeah. You might be able to gain one there. Yeah, I think so. So essentially then, I don't see the 46 spots even with the back, but that's not, I mean, they can, because you have the two dumpsters. I don't know where you would put the dumpsters. They eat up spots. So maybe we just do one dumpster on our end for both, you know, maybe Cody doesn't have his own, maybe we just have the one for the whole building, and we just have to walk a little over.
Well, that's planning and zoning.
Right. I was just going to get to, the dumpster, correct.
Is it adequate to have 46 parking spaces when 58 are required onsite? Whether it works, that's why I said it remains to be seen, it may not. Yeah.
Yeah, because of the dumpsters, and so, because like I said, when I count the spaces. My only concern would be is that you say the number of dental offices, I go to a dentist in town, and it's a small practice, but between the billing people, the hygienists, the two dentists, there's, they can't even park, they leave their parking lot open because there's so many cars, they park all over the streets for their cars. Concern is if it overflows, there's no street parking. I mean, it's tough to park on the street there. That's the only concern I would have. But this would be up to planning and zoning. I mean, if you can get the 46 spots, but if they can't get 46, can planning and zoning say 45, but we approve 46?
Right, then they'll be back.
They have to come back.
Right. You cannot approve less than they're asking for. They're not asking for existing.
All right, so, I don't know.
If they're asking for the existing 39 and proposing some extra, that'd be different. That's not what they...
Will they have to prove that they have 39 spots to planning and zoning or just have to show?
39 is already there, so...
Okay, it's not there, but yeah, okay. Not the way it's marked.
But what are the 46 spaces? It applies?
So when it was originally built, I know who built it, so when, when he originally built the place, it might have been approved for the 46, but they might only have, or 39, but they might only have 37 drawn. They might only have 37 spots there.
Shipped in their dumpster, whatever you say, so...
Well, no, those are not even, no, those are in actual spots.
That's what I'm saying, so they've just shifted things. The site that was submitted, that was approved initially demonstrates 39 spaces onsite. Whether they're properly being used remains to be seen. They are asking for 46, which will need to go through planning and zoning.
How many people are in the barber shop? Customers?
More than I would think. I had to wait for the person who cuts my hair, so I'm trying to think, there's a waiting room last time I was there, there were three or four of us waiting. There were maybe only four barbers on at that particular time. They come and go.
So there's eight people coming and going?
There were, yeah, there had to be at least eight or nine people when I was, yeah, because there were, no, there were more than that, because there were people in the chairs, and then we were waiting.
Well, so I said...
And then there's the barbers.
Yeah. Well, I was, okay.
There were over 10, there were over 10 people.
So you got 10 plus the five or six barbers?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, there were maybe eight of us, and then the four or five barbers.
Yeah.
When I was there, there were maybe four or five. There weren't, there weren't six. There was, there was a chair open next to me.
I have a question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I have a question, and that is, has there ever been a parking problem there while you've had it as, you know, in the current configuration and the current tenants that you have?
Like West Center Market?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was there. He was a supermarket.
Yeah. Yeah, so you had the barber there, and you had West Center Market.
Was it always a barber, or was there a dry cleaner there or something at one time?
He's been there a while, but he was there while the supermarket was there.
Okay.
Whether it was the first one or the second.
Which is the odd thing, because you would think the supermarket traffic and parking would be far more demanding than a dentist's office.
But I'm just wondering, has there ever been a problem there with...
I don't think so. Cody's never said anything that they've had issues with them, or, he was, he said he was going to come and talk a little tonight, but I didn't think...
I don't think there was ever, excuse me.
It was a dry cleaner before.
Right, I thought there was.
It was a dry cleaner.
But I, I know when I used to go to West Side Market, I never had a problem finding a parking space. It was always enough parking there.
So if we, if they, if they can get the 46, and you took 13 spots for the barber shop, that leaves them 33 spots. Is that enough for a dentist's office?
I'd hope it did grow. I'd hope it'd grow.
I'm just saying, that's a, that's the question, if we go, if we even use those numbers.
I mean, if you only have two dentists, but if you grow to three, you know, then it becomes, because they have more hygienists, it, it grows. And then that's the whole thing. That's, and once this variance is granted then, if they, if our, he goes past one. Another use, the high intensity parking use can go in there that really required the fifty-six, but can it go in under the forty, uh, could require the fifty-seven, but can go in under the forty-six? Or does it need to go before zoning?
They would have to meet their own parking requirement for the site.
So every time it changes ownership, it has to change, okay?
Not ownership, use.
Use, that's what I'm, that's why, that's why.
Once, once Cody's lease is up, they plan on taking the entire building. I don't know if that's clear or not.
The dentist's office plans on taking?
For what they have for the space now, too, so.
So then that whole lot would be for the dentist's office?
And I don't think they're gonna use that portion for dental work. That's gonna be like, you know, meeting.
Billings or a billing office or whatever?
Kind of cram. They're, they're looking at that like this is their dental office and that's gonna be like their office space. So I don't think it's gonna increase.
And how much longer? How much longer before that would happen?
I think he might have a seven year, but I think he talked to them. They might buy him out or something, you know, earlier if, you know, if they decide to do that. But I think it'll get better with them being owners and operating it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If my math is right, if our rules, our regulations were in line with this I T E parking generation manual, they would only require thirty-six spaces for this. And it would be forty-six in total, which is what you say you're able to get.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to, merchant business is great.
Sure, sure, sure.
Place to be filled. I was just concerned about parking because you see other, see other places that parking comes in. There's no overflow for you guys. Sure, you guys have no overflow. If you guys had overflow, we're parking on the street or something like that. But there's no overflow there.
Anybody else got any questions? Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Do you have anything further you'd like to add? I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a variance request for forty-six parking spaces where fifty-eight spaces are required and thirty-nine exist to change the use of forty-four South Turnpike Road from retail to medical office. It's shown unimprovement. Location survey dated February first, two thousand and five and revision dated April nineteenth, two thousand and five. So moved.
So I just wanna hold up for a minute. Should we, this is gonna be. Once planning and zoning approves it, should that be?
They can approve it and they can say no.
Right.
That doesn't matter.
But they, but they still gotta go. We don't have to add that into our.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, continue.
No problem.
Can we get a second?
We got a second on that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Bruce.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Raddatz.
Yes to approve, Chairman Rose.
Yes to approve, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, next. Application twenty-five zero zero, a special exception for New Life Church. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. We have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant proposes daycare slash preschool facility at eight sixty-six North Main Street Extension with enrollment capacity of ninety-five students in a seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six square foot unit of current multi-tenant office building in an I X district. Child daycare is a permitted use in the zone by special exception from the Z B A. Any modifications to the site beyond existing conditions other than use may require site plan approval from the P Z C. The board should condition any approval and review by the town planner for any proposed site changes slash modifications requiring planning and zoning permission approval. And, uh, what else? Uh, we do have an interdepartment memorandum from the Health Department dated Monday, the seventeenth. No, dated Friday, March seventh.
Isn't there a letter too also from a?
Yes, we do.
A neighbor, I saw.
We also have a letter from Y and O Wallingford LLC dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your director, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. I represent the applicant. To my right, to me, right, is Pastor Will Marotti from the New Life Church. And to his right is Danielle Kremsar, who's the director of the current daycare operation at seven North Turnpike Road. The parcel is, you know, eight sixty-six North Main Street Extension. It's five point one five acres in size. It was developed with an office building in nineteen eighty-four. According to your assessors' records, about thirty-three thousand square feet or so, Zone I X. Uh, we're here because under that zone, in order to operate the daycare, you need a special exception. Not a hardship or a variance, but a special exception. This site, as you probably know well, having looked at it as a, as a common driveway with eight sixty North Main Street Extension, which that access strip is quite long. The driveway is served by a traffic light, uh, which is one of the more important features that, uh, that compelled my client to look at this site that made it worthwhile to consider. So the applicant operates the Carver preschool for children from infants to pre-K H four currently. Uh, it is located currently at seven North Turnpike Road here in Wallingford, but it has to relocate based upon certain lease considerations. And, um, they looked at sites, wanted to find a site that worked well for their current, um, parents and children and staff. And they found this location. Um, this is gonna be about, as Amy points out in her comments, about seventy-seven hundred square feet of the building over at eight sixty-six North Main Street. There will be an outside play area enclosed by fencing and accessible only from the inside of the building. So you couldn't access anything from outside to make sure that everything as designed is safe. You know, being a special exception, of course, it has to meet the requirements of your regulations. And the primary one, as I read it, says that, um, the key is the relation of this use to streets giving access to it. And here we have access which is handled by a four-way traffic light, making it, you know, wonderfully safe. And again, that was an important feature for even considering this location. There are no school buses. Um, I'm gonna respond a little bit to that letter that you referenced. Uh, just parents will be dropping off and picking up their children. And again, Danielle Kremsar can talk to the operations currently and, and the fact that that is, that's a truism. Uh, the driveway has significant length, as I talked about before. I'm sure you've been up there. Uh, the parking spaces are designed to minimize any internal conflict, conflicting movements. You've got to the right, the traffic for, the parking rather for eight sixty North Main Street Extension to the left. As you go up the driveway, uh, the parking identified for eight sixty-six. I don't know whether you've been up there recently or not. Uh, I was up as recently as this morning and I saw nine cars. There's probably about between the two locations, over a hundred parking spaces. And again, you know, hopefully things will pick up, uh, business will be, will be vibrant there. But the daycare is very, very comfortable that, you know, the children are dropped off, picked up, it's supervised, all that occurs. And it occurs over a period of several hours. It's not, again, no, no school buses. It's not as if there's this huge influx of people at any one time. I'm gonna have Pastor Will just talk a little bit about the operation and then Danielle answer any questions or present to you the fact that, you know, why the site's been considered. Uh, it's already been, um, proposed to the parents of the current children who are part of the daycare. Uh, they, none of them have expressed any concern about this location. Uh, it is also a location that would have to be approved by the state and they've already taken a look at it preliminarily and have expressed no reservation. So we're very comfortable. Uh, we're here after a lot of research and, and consideration of what would be best for, for the children. So with that, Pastor Will, I'm gonna turn it to you.
Uh, the daycare's been operating for about twenty years. We started it originally in the People's Republic of South Meriden. And, uh. By way of church merger, uh, in two thousand and six, where the church, uh, formerly Calvary Baptist Church on B Street in Meriden. Uh, we maintained the daycare in the South Meriden location, but then we were able to get a different location for the church. So we moved the daycare into the B Street location, which was there for about eight years. Then we sold that property to a church. From that time, we moved to the current location, which is the seven, uh, seven North Turnpike Road, which has been a fabulous location. Was a bank, I think Dine was there, TD was, a bunch of banks were there. And it's designed to be safe, which is wonderful for our tagline to our parents, that your kids are safe with us. So we like that very much. Danielle has been with us for a number of years. She has many, many years experience. She worked in another daycare center in Wallingford. And the reason is that, you know, right now, as you well know, there's a tremendous shortage of daycare in Connecticut. This largely because of COVID. And we knew it during COVID, it was gonna be a difficult time. And we lost a lot of students. A lot of parents weren't working. They didn't need daycare. They pulled the kids. Same thing for our, our private school, Carver Academy. We lost a lot of kids during COVID. But we knew if we could weather the storm through COVID and we could stay standing, a lot of others wouldn't. And then we would be able to fill that space. So really, the move is a necessity of, of growth and great demand. I'll, I'll have Danielle say about the waiting list we have right now. But, uh, you know, so we've been doing this for twenty years. We have a sterling record in Meriden. We have a sterling record here. Uh, sterling record with the state, no complaints, no problems. We've got a wonderful staff. We've got an incredibly bright and energetic and skilled director. And, uh, so we think it's a really good move for certainly us, but I mean, it's a great opportunity to be able to care for more kids in a time when there's a tremendous shortage throughout the state with daycare.
So. How many kids are you gonna have?
Well, we're asking for ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
We think that's a reason for the space. The state decides that ultimately based on square footage.
Right.
But, you know, we've done this a few times.
My only concern, mine, um, and it, this is a big property. I've been up there many times, is just the procedure for drop-off and pickup.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that. The way that upper parking lot is designed, you know, to go to the building on the right, you, there's that island you gotta drive around. And then there's parking in behind, behind it, or there was parking behind it. It's limited, but there's parking behind that. But I'm just, so that, if you could explain your procedure, you're gonna have and where they're gonna, how the traffic's gonna flow there.
The architect that we're using suggested that we add an additional entrance for that reason. So we're not gonna be using the main entrance because it's a long, it's a large building. It's a long hallway, all the way down to the back where we're using the back corner building. So we're installing a new sidewalk and a new front door, uh, which would be close to the front parking places for drop-off. All of the staff will park in, in the seventy-five, eighty parking spaces that are already there. So we don't really think, uh, we, we know there won't be a congestion problem. I'll let you talk about drop-off and pickup. It, it's staggered. We don't have a problem with that now at seven North Turnpike. We never had a problem with it anywhere before. And we think that this can really facilitate getting the parents and the kids out of the car, out of the parking lot and into the building quickly.
Okay.
So we won't have any cross.
I mean, that is, that is a big driveway up and there is plenty of room up there. Like I said, I just, because of that property to the right and the letter, you know, how's the flow gonna work? So you're not, you know, go ahead.
So if we're licensed for ninety-five students, that doesn't necessarily mean there'll be ninety-five cars. It's, a lot of our families have two, three kids, plus our drop-off time's from six-thirty to ten. So it is definitely scattered. We have never in the building we are in now had a problem where parents couldn't park and get their kids out. Mind you, all parents wanna be in the front to get to sidewalk.
How many kids are you over on, uh, on North Turnpike?
I have fifty-six kids enrolled, but fifty-one a day because my building's only licensed for fifty-one students, but I have six, fifty-six.
And that's a small property there, right?
And so I, with the fifty-one kids, I've never, we've never came in an issue where the staff works in the back. You know, my parents drop off in the front. We've never had congestion or any type of child like, you know, running away. Um, our parents are very good holding their hands. Um, we practice safety too. So we don't have high congestion drop-off.
Okay, like I said, that's my, with the letter, you know, we got the letter and that's my only concern. Like I said, this is a big piece, big property. I've been up there many times and I understand, and there is a lot of parking up there. But it's just the, the flow. So you don't have cars backed up and then people coming for the next building trying to get in. They can't get in. That's, that's it.
Are those cars going to loop around the island that's at the top of the hill in front of that building?
Yeah, well, they, they will come in through the main entrance and I think immediately go to the, to the right or to the left. We're, we're hoping to utilize as many of the spots as we can. There's some tiny handicap spots there, but they're never used. Not that we should, you know, shouldn't account for that.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we're hoping they'll go immediately to the right or to the left where there's probably a total of, uh, oh my goodness. There's at least a dozen to fifteen parking spaces, uh, across the front of the building. And we'll never need more than that for drop-off or pickup. It just, it just doesn't happen. We don't have that many at North Turnpike. But we have probably ten maybe in front, so.
And then, um, they'll go right to the new sidewalks that we're putting in. So the kids will be on the sidewalks.
Yeah, they'll come up the driveway, the way, uh, it's depicted in the, take a left at the top of the hill here.
Yes, as they come up, as they come up to the drive through here, they'll come right to where the main entrance is. And we're willing to direct them either immediately to the, to the right or to the left of when they come in. The new sidewalk is gonna be right here and the, and the new front door will be right there. So literally, I mean, they'll be feet away from where the, where the entrance is. And there's plenty of room to maneuver them, to get, get them back out into the main driveway. Uh, there's, again, there's no school buses. I don't know, we, I saw something in the letter about deliveries with tractor-trailers. I talked to the owner of eight sixty-six this afternoon. He regrets not being here. He's in Florida with his son who's at a hockey tournament. Sad. Um. And he said, uh, he said, you know, he's there a lot. He owns a, he has a lot of properties in Wallingford. He's never seen tractor-trailers up there. So I don't know if the folks at eight sixty are planning for something in the future perhaps. But right now, the, the traffic is so minimal. And, and of course, we'll add to it, but not to make it congested or any dangerous.
Yeah, eight sixty does have a loading dock on the south end of the building. They do know that. Whether they use it or not, I don't know. But, but they do know there is one.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my question is, it says there's, um, daycare and also preschool.
It's the same. It's pre-K, it's infant to pre-K for, so four-year-olds. We call it preschool.
Well, my, my question was, uh, I understand with daycare, you know, whatever is probably convenient for the parents is when they're gonna drop them off, whether they compete work at seven or eight or nine. But if it's preschool, is there a designated start time?
No, so for Carver, um, we open at six-thirty. Your kid, your child has to be in by ten. There's no. I mean, if they have like doctor's appointments, they have to let us know ahead of time to allow them in. Um, but our preschool program runs throughout the day. So I know that some daycares, because I came from one that did this, has preschool hours from nine to twelve. We don't do that. Ours is a whole day thing. So they, parents pick an eight and a half to nine hour day every day that their kids are there. Like, we don't do half-days at our daycare.
Okay, that's what I was concerned with. They were gonna have ninety-five kids potentially all have to be there at, say, eight.
No, no, no.
But, yeah, okay, great.
You should know too, that just recently, uh, the daycare was awarded the best preschool by the Reader's Choice Award folks, which is, uh, it used to be Record Journal, but that's votes from all over the area. And we were, we were both, our preschool and our private school were both named best in the area.
What's the hours of operation?
Six-thirty and five-thirty.
Five-thirty, so parents, everybody's picked up by five-thirty and out the door.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else got?
It's a long day.
So.
It is.
This is to Amy also, then. They're talking about putting a new sidewalk and a new entrance in. Do they need to go to zoning for that?
Probably not. They're, they're changing the site at all, like what, it was unclear what the playground would amount to, so. But it, they'll check, but most likely not, or maybe an administrative or something.
So you're talking about, as you're facing the building, eight sixty's here, eight sixty-six is you guys. You're talking going on the right side of the building.
Yes.
So that's where.
Right to eight sixty-six.
Right, and so that's where eight sixty, that's where their driveway is.
Right.
That's where their cars are going to their back lot and so forth.
If, if they go to the back lot, but quite frankly, I've been up there so many times, they've got parking right here.
But the building's not full.
And you never see cars beyond that.
Yeah, but, but.
I mean, it could, it could happen.
Well, I'm just saying for this particular time and frame, those buildings are pretty empty.
Yeah.
And they're thirty thousand square foot buildings. So there's, could be a lot of tenants that could be coming in with a lot more vehicles on the right-hand side. Where is the playground gonna be then?
Okay, so right on the side of the building with eight sixty-six. So right on the side of the building with 866, there's a, there's a large grass area covered by trees. So we're going to take at least two of the three trees down. We'll do the excavation. There has to be, you know, eight inches of, of absorbing chips. Case kids fall. And then we'll have child-grade fencing around the entire area. But the, the entrance to the playground will be through the building. We don't want any kids escaping and chasing.
And what I'm doing, I have all pictures of the buildings. That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the right side of the building here, so you'll come off the back of the building.
You're pretty prepared, that's good.
I do. You probably noticed. So, so on the right hand, I see the two trees you'll be taking down, most likely those two. And you're just going to open up the back of the building to go straight out then, so you don't have to go, because this really, the right-hand side of the building literally is 10 feet of probably grass area and then it's parking lot again, and then it's drive-through area. It's not even parking lot.
It's a little bit, not pie-shaped, but it does, it does extend out. The farther back you go, the wider it gets. And so it's, it's a, it's a really nice square pattern toward the, that kind of narrows down toward the front. So it's not, it's not a pie per se, but.
Yeah, it does get a little bigger in the back, because that's where the driveway goes to, takes a right loop there. Yeah, my concern is Joe's concern is the number of kids, kids with the number of cars that potentially could be there. Yes, there might not be many cars there now, but two years from now, that 30, so I don't know how much Killer Williams takes up in the space there, so, but they're not a high-use place because they're real estate, but if you get a high use, there could be a lot of cars there. And then you're talking about going, looping the cars to the right when you come in. When you come up the driveway, going to the right, not to the left.
It could be either or, depending on the building, parking spots. Could go to the left because there's spots all the way down that front side of the building to the left. There's also parking spots down the right side of the building. In the right part of the building, the northern part of the building, is where, is that right? North, will be where the, where the new entrance is. So I think the immediate, you know, the first response would be go, pull in the driveway, turn to the right where the parking spaces are. But if those are full, then they could go right, you know, right across to the left.
Because the ones right in front of the building are all handicapped.
I think, I think four of them are.
But I, I thought there were more. Pretty much the whole thing was handicapped, I remember. I commented, yeah, that's, yeah, there, one, two, three, five on the right side, and then there's a couple on the left. So that whole side is, all right, I, I'm just, my major concern would be.
One thing too, Mr. Ross, there'll never be all the kids in the playground at one time.
I'm talking about the playground shifts. I'm not talking about the playground, it's just having potentially 100 kids during the course of a day, traversing back and forth, in and out of the building, cars coming, other people going, coming and going through that area.
There'll never be all the, all the kids.
Oh, I, oh, I understand that, but when they leave the building, how many teachers do you have then?
So if my building was completely staffed at the new place, there would be no more than 17 adults at a time.
No administrators or anything like that?
No, that's with administration.
Okay. So 17 people?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a ton of parking up there. That's not a, that's not an issue here. It's just a safety issue up here, being in this particular location, because down the road, there could be so many cars.
See, we've been doing this so long, we would never entertain anything that wasn't safe or presented a risk to the kids.
I, I fully understand that. I just, you know, you have to always think of the, think of all the times, and that, that's the thing, and then, and there's kids involved, and you're talking kids who just don't pay, I mean, 15-year-olds don't pay attention, but the four-year-olds don't know any better.
But we completely restrict our four-year-olds from having iPhones, so there's no restriction.
That's a good thing. Fifteen-year-olds probably shouldn't have them either. I don't know, I'm just.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Has anybody else got any questions for the application?
No, no.
Move it out. Has anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing, none, if anything further you'd like to add before I close the public hearing?
I just want to make one comment, and that's, and I understand the concerns you've expressed, and two, maybe three responses to that. Number one is the fact that, you know, New Life Church doesn't go there, Carver Academy Preschool doesn't go there without having considered all these factors. I mean, these are important factors, but they're, they're known factors. That's something that they've considered. Number one. Number two is the state also has to approve the site, and they're going to look at the same factors, and they've already acknowledged, and they're not here, I don't have anything in writing, but I'm told by Pastor Will, he can make that representation, that they've already looked at the site preliminarily and they think it works wonderfully for their use. The third thing is, I was looking at, you know, the letter that came in, and I understand that, you know, it's designed, it was a nicely written letter from Montana, it's designed to, you know, try to provide you with information, but there were some either exaggerations or statements that really didn't make any sense, for example, talking about buses. One of the comments is that the two sites share a single point of egress, which is true, that exit with a left turn onto a busy street. It exits at a traffic light that's a four-way turn. I mean, everything is sort of slanted to make it sound more imposing and more problematic. It is something that we've considered and we're here because we're comfortable with the location.
You make the left turn at the top of the hill, but not at the bottom of the hill.
That's fine.
None of that, you know, I, I looked, so I, that wasn't the concern. That, I mean, this letter, I did read it, because I read everything that's comes, but, and did want to know if there were buses, because I did not know. But the concern was, it's just the number of kids with a building that could have another 20,000 square feet taken or thereabouts, and the building next door, so there could be a lot of traffic. That's my concern. Where you are now, you're just, you're, you're, you're all into yourself.
Right.
So you control all the traffic, you control everything. And if it was variance and you were the only one in that building, I would have no problem with it, but having another 20,000 square feet there and additional cars coming and going, that's, I just think of, never wanted to see or anything ever to have happened and then say, damn, I voted for that. You know, that's, you know, that's, I always think of potential, don't want anything ever to happen. I mean, you know, you always got to think, that's my concern. Just want to be aware.
Okay, anything further? We're, we're good?
Nothing.
And I close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion for special exception request to use 40.
Plus or minus?
Oh, plus or minus. 7,726 square feet of building at 866 North Main Street Extension is a childcare preschool facility, has shown on the plans received 212, 25, submitted to. Move it.
Comments?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. And the comments of the Health Department, received March 10th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Sorry.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Raddatz.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russell.
Yes to approve.